I don't know if she's got the recording on or the livestream on. The camera doesn't have video right now. Just so you know. The camera's not working right. Audio.
No, I'm not her views, but.
In fact, a friend, a colleague of mine down in South Carolina who is running the public. But that's got nothing to do with it. As choices go, as choices go there, I don't disagree that she's polished and reasonable. Anybody else have six o'clock? Okay, then I will call the meeting of the Board of Education. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to take a moment for a moment of silence for the following. Grace Fluno, a retired employee of the Norris Syracuse Central. Begin this evening with an update on the Norris Syracuse Central School District's school entry program. So, Mr. Bowles.
A lot has transpired since the last time we were together and I want to just go through some of the working documents that we've been creating since we were last here. So with the reentry plan, I wanted to show you a few of the instructional models and give you a few numbers before we get fully into the program. Currently, we had 200, 2,088 students choosing to go remote learning. That would leave us 6,017 hybrid students that are coming into school part of the time. And also, we have 144 students currently looking at homeschooling. We did throw the number of homeschool numbers from last year on the screen and that was 157, so we're still in line with our homeschool population. When we get started, I'd like to invite Mr. Stone and Mr. Leahy up to the microphone because they've been working on the numbers along the way. And the last time we were here, we had about 1,100 students at that time put in for remote learning, which was about 13% of our population. Currently, at 2,088, that puts us at 26% of the population. When Donna DeZiato at ESM was looking at doing her model, she had predicted about 30 to 35% of the students at East Syracuse-Minowa looking to go remote learning. So, we're still in that neighborhood, but again, it jumped up in the last two weeks significantly, forcing us to make several changes. So, Mr. Stone and Leahy. First thing we wanted to find for the board is what is synchronous and what is asynchronous as far as how we're instructing? And I'm going to start off with Mr. Stone.
Thanks, Mr. Bowles. So, the biggest thing, I think, for everyone in our entire community is just to understand what this model actually means and looks like, because these words get thrown around so much that it does get kind of confusing. So, really, the biggest difference in the way we kind of define it and break it down simply put, synchronous instruction is that time when there's interactive time between the teacher and the student in some form of interactive way. So, that could be when in a face-to-face model like we normally do with question-answer or anything else that happens in a classroom where there's back and forth. Or if we're in a Zoom or using an online platform, synchronous would be, you could use a Zoom where students are able to respond live time in a chat feature or be able to communicate back and forth verbally. So, it's any time there's, there's, there's an ability of interactive dialogue of some form between teacher and student. So synchronous can cover a lot. Asynchronous is basically all the other times. That's when there's, there's not an ability for an interactive type of situation, but it's oftentimes, we would use Google Classroom. We would, we can post assignments. We can have students use videos. But there is some form of interaction there as well, and we ask that teachers provide feedback for the work that students complete. So asynchronous kind of is that wheelhouse of everything else. Synchronous is really that time that's interactive between the two.
Thank you. So, the first schedule that is up on the screen shows a student's schedule that's coming to school in the hybrid model. We put up a schedule sample for students that will be in the model being remote, K4. They should be quite similar in fashion and again, looking at the synchronous and asynchronous opportunity. I think the last time you looked, you had stars within the model showing the days, so we wanted to put a sample of what subjects in the schedule would look like K4. We moved through a middle school model. As you can see, a little bit different and has periods. And ELA is blocked in both areas. So, you can see that there are longer times for ELA in math. And this is a sample of what a fifth grade, sixth grade schedule may look like. I don't know if Dr. Leahy want to comment on the middle school?
Yeah, so again, like Dan and Ingrid had shared, so we have two groups of kids that we're working with this year, and we have a mandate to provide, you know, a quality education for both. So, we have our remote learners and our hybrid learners. Because of social distancing guidelines, we can't have all of our students in our classrooms. We can only have a little bit around half, a little bit less than half. So, what you have here is you have two cohorts or two groups. The first group is going to attend school for our middle schools on Monday and Tuesday. And those are students whose names run from A to K. And then the second group will attend Thursday, Friday. That Wednesday is that, that day that kind of splits the two and allows us, our teachers, to work with our kids both, as Mr. Stone said, asynchronously as well synchronously, as well as have some planning time, some office hours, some department time to work with their colleagues to plan the instruction. So, what's different and what this doesn't really reveal is that those class sizes are going to be much smaller. 12 students or so is what will be in a classroom. However, that's only half the class. The other class will be learning, the other side of the class will be learning from home. So, what you've done is you've taken your traditional class of 24 students, let's say, and 12 might be in front of you and 12 might be learning from home. And the idea is to feed them through the asynchronous learning while you have students in front of you teaching synchronously. So, that's the challenge. And that's a big mindset, a change of mindset for all of our teachers as well as our students and parents, is to deliver instruction for both those groups, the half that's in school on a given day, and then continue the instruction for those students who aren't in school on a given day.
Could you do me a favor and just go back to the elementary model now that I heard that, just to make sure I understood what I saw? Same idea here then? Exactly, you said half are coming? So, you have enough? The population is such that we can do half of them each on two days in the elementary and up in five and six? Okay.
All the way through seven, actually. The middle schools too, but the seventh grade's a little bit different. But all the way, our elementary schools, our middle schools, half will be on Monday, Tuesday, and half will be on Thursday and Friday.
So, this is the start of the seventh grade model. I don't know if you want to.
Yeah, so this is very much similar, but what's different, you'll see, is there's world languages, there's technology, you have more electives. And this is where, kind of the starting point of where the schedule gets more complicated because student schedules are not identical. You're not teaching, K through six, you don't have a certified teacher that's certified to teach those core areas. Now, you have teachers who are specialists certified to teach English, seven through 12, or math, or social studies, or science. At the same time, what we want to do is we value all of our teachers and we certainly value our extracurriculars as well as our electives, all those different courses that we offer. We want to give students that full complement of courses. So, you see here, again, that we're going to be offering all that throughout the day on a rotating schedule. So, you'll see your family, consumer sciences and art opposite your world languages because now students are taking world languages. And as we work through the scheduling process, once we get to the seventh grade, things get, as you'll see, a little bit more complicated as we, as we get into the older grades, the upper grades. All right? And here's the, here's the junior high. Now, what's unique about the junior high is we won't have, we can't accommodate, because of the size of the building, students coming twice a week. What we've done is divided into four days a week for the junior high and high school. So, here, if you look at the Monday A day, we originally explored the idea, could we get kids in for, to see all their teachers for your day? The challenge with that is room utilization, cleaning rooms between uses, and moving kids around the building to make sure that when they're entering a new classroom, that they actually be entering a classroom that had been cleaned and sterilized and all that. That's not possible. The other challenge, of course, with eighth, once you get to eighth grade, is that now kids are taking different levels of courses. So, it's not one math class for everybody. You might have two different math classes per grade level. Students are taking different science classes. You have half-year courses, full-year courses. So, again, as we work our way up to 12th grade, things get more complicated. At the same time, we want it to be some degree of equity. So, those students will come in, work through the first four blocks of their schedule on the first Monday. The next Monday, they'll work through the second four blocks of their schedule, five through eight, and they'll continue rotating throughout the year. Again, Wednesday will be a day for remote learning for all of our students with both synchronous asynchronous instruction, office hours for support with, with their teachers. So, that's what the hybrid instruction would look like for the eighth graders. The ninth graders, you would see it's very similar. You'll see some different electives in there. But again, they're going to be working through that kind of a, that rotation throughout, throughout the day, these different blocks. And again, the first Monday, they would have their first five, their first four blocks. And then the next Monday, they would have blocks five through eight. That way, they will see all their teachers over the two-week period. And one of the benefits, however, is saying, hey, although you're only going to see your teacher every other week, you're going to see that teacher for about 80 minutes. So, you're going to have some real extended time to work through your lessons with that teacher on the day that you do attend school. And now here, we look at the CNS hybrid. Again, very similar setup with the junior high. Here, we have on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, we have the groups of students defined in terms of their letter. And again, here we have a blocks kind of setup. We have in-person learning, that's just in the morning. As students are coming in, you have algebra, English, perhaps clothing production back with lunch, and chemistry, and then some learning office hours towards the end of the day. And again, we've got four, again, four blocks. They'll see in the first Monday, second Monday, they'll see the other four blocks that they have to complete their schedule. Extended time with each teacher, not possible to do 40 minutes and transition eight times a day and to keep those rooms available for students' use. You know, ideally, like Mr. Stone has done a really terrific job planning with the elementary schools where you can keep kids in rooms and move teachers, but because the student's schedules are so unique with so many different electives, different courses, some students taking advanced courses, some students taking regents-level courses, it's a very hard thing to schedule that way. So, our students do have to move. We have to be very thoughtful in those transitions and make sure if they do move, we're limiting the amount of students in the building, in the hallways, in the cafeteria, as we make our way through the schedule.
So, just to give everyone a sense of what's been going on behind the scenes, students and families had the opportunity to make a selection up until this past Wednesday at the end of the day. So, we were still taking in requests for remote learning up until that time and then trying to build schedules for 6,017 for hybrid and then also for the other students that were 2,088 that are looking at being remote. And then matching them or aligning them to staff. And so, that's been a challenge for us in the last three to four days. Some of the other things that have been going on behind the scenes that were requirements, screening protocols for reopening plan had to be submitted to Onondahga County Health Department along with school contact document that was submitted. So, what that is, they want to know in the event that someone tests positive or they have information that someone in our schools tested positive, they're looking to us to provide them information for contact tracing. So, for an example, they want to know from that schedule, who was in such-and-such class at, at a certain day or a certain time? And were there any other people that were in that class? At the elementary, contact tracing is a lot easier. As you move up through the secondary, it makes it a little bit more difficult because they, they do move. But we have to have procedures in place, who are, who's the contact, day and night? And they have our personal information and protocols that they, we had to put in place. We finished the third parent session and also a staff information session, trying to provide as much as possible information to all the parties. Again, there are many questions that we're still answering that come in via email. We've asked all the administrators also for pickup and drop-off procedures. So, they have been set up so that we can efficiently maneuver people through parking lots, outside busing lanes, and have a process in doorways so that the traffic flow does not cross paths as we're looking to do that. I believe all the board got to see some of the new temperature scans that we do have to assist in that process as we're doing our pickups and having people enter the building. One of the things that will be going out is an elementary and middle school video on procedures for students and parents. We're going to be sending that home on September 1st, so, or if not before, so that students will get a picture of what the classroom will look like, what does it look like when I'm getting on the bus, what are new procedures in just moving or walking in the hall so that they understand what they're supposed to be doing? What does it mean to have your mask on in school? What does it mean when you're taking a mass break? So, all of those things will be sent home for the parents and students to view. Again, we were assigning staff to remote learners and also the temperature check equipment will probably be at the building levels before the students get here. You got to see that sample. One of the big things that is going to be a major undertaking is the one-to-one Chromebook distribution. So, 512, our first day is September 10th. We, we will probably getting the Chromebooks to our 512 people before school starts. The students that are K4, we heard, the feedback from the teachers was that they need to make sure they're teaching the kids how to properly log on and use the Chromebook before we have them just bringing those home. So, they're, they're going to get theirs as soon as they enter school, but they want to take some time with the students for teaching purposes. So, that is some of the information that is happening more recently and we are still, we sent out instructional expectations this afternoon and we'll be sending out additional instructional expectation for our remote learners. When will those go out, Mr.? It'll be by the end of the week for the remote learners instructional information. Are there any questions? We're hearing from teachers on instructional issues, some with special ed, some with safety, whether it be about mask use, some about cleaning and how, cleaning process and, and things that are used for cleaning. If we, if you have any specifics that you'd like to ask, I did ask Mr. Irwin to be here, but those are some of the, the highlights.
Do you go back to the middle school hybrid for?
I would like that to be something I could work with them when we get home, so I can be there and walk them through it. So, what we want to do is have the materials available at that time online for students to work through, but understanding too, that for some parents, they may need to be able to access that later in the day and not at that given moment because they don't have the structure of the supervision they need there. So, that's, that's one of the challenges by opening this up, is we have these two sets of expectations and basically, hey, they're both legitimate concerns as every family situation's unique. So, what we want to do is say, hey, as that, those timeframes are there, the structure will be there, but we know that for some families, based on personal dynamics or who's available to supervise children at that time, they may not be able to work through those assignments, let's say, from eight to nine. They might get to it later in the day. So, what we want to do is to be able to say, hey, there's enough structure that it worked from if your child's ready to go and wants to get it done. But there's, there's not so much structure that if a child can't be there because the family has a dynamic where they can't support them, they're going to be penalized for missing the instruction. So, we're trying to walk that balance. And a lot of this is balance, you know, in terms of working with everybody and trying to meet everyone's expectations to some degree. I would say pretty much, yeah. Would you say the same?
I just want to go back to one question of, and that question was, how do we do the instruction for after you've seen kids in person and then those are home? That's one of the biggest questions that we're seeing from, from staff. And we're putting together a visual so that they can actually see it because right now, that's one of the, probably the biggest questions that we're having.
Which is good because it's extremely time consuming. Well, that's, that's a good thing.
One of the ideas that we've explored a little bit and we've talked about, really, the research, and there's not a lot of research out this, given this is also brand-new, is the idea that all teachers should plan for remote learning. Because there's several contingencies. One is, we have to close a classroom because there's a positive case or a classrooms, or we have to close a building, or we have to close a district. We have to, we're required to transition to remote learning like that. So, really, the best guidance, and this is what I'm going to be sharing tomorrow, is we should plan for all of our students as remote learners and that timing class is when you can do those really great quality activities, enrichment, really get deeper into the material. Almost likely, what you would hear is a flip model, but the best guidance would be, plan everyone as if they're remote, plan your instruction remotely because we may very well be there at some point, but also because it's easier to transition to the in-person. We're all very good and used to that. It's much harder to plan online and to offer instruction online. And I think that's a challenge for everybody. Our teachers have done a nice job this summer, taking a whole litany of PD courses around Google Classroom and hybrid teaching and all that. We have a lot more to do. And I think as we start the school year, that's going to be our theme over the next several months is, is giving them wraparound support. We want our tech coaches to be able to get in those classrooms and coach the teachers as they learn this new world that we're, we're living in. We want after-school support. We want resources available for those people who say, hey, I don't have time, but I can go and, and learn a little bit. We want to build it into the first four days they get here before students. Because right now, on the instructional side, this is our biggest challenge, is working with students who are in front of you and who are not, and what does that mean? So, we're, that's why where that Wednesday is going to be helpful, there's going to be additional planning time, which should help out. Where ideally, what we'd love to see is our teachers collaborate. And there's no reason to say that four ELA teachers who teach the same subject in the same course can't collaborate to offer the instruction together and take turns. And I've seen that model within our district and other districts, say, hey, it's week one, it's Christmas turn to build up the instruction and put it out, and then week two, we just rotate around. It's the idea of working smarter, not harder. And what concerns me is, we've got to connect everybody up. And we also, we also know within our buildings, our department chairs can take a lead. We've got some really sophisticated people in terms of technology, how do we make them available to colleagues as well as our, our tech coaches? So, there's a lot of resources we have to bring to bear on this. And it's going to be, it's going to be a start that we're going to encourage you to take your time, let's ease out into this slowly, but we want to give you the support and we want to hear from you as we go through this. And we've heard from some teachers some concerns, and they're, and they're valid concerns. And that's why we want to get more information out tomorrow as we move forward.
Question is Chromebooks. Take them back home every day or whatever?
So, for example, for K through 12, kids are going to be there one day, so they're going to take them and bring them home. I know Mr. Stone had some ideas about proper way to get this off the ground in terms of the, when you want to.
Those are concern a parent had with me was, they can't keep track of their gloves. I think you have a Chromebook.
Yeah. And just to answer that, you're absolutely right. We spend a lot of time talking about our youngest learners. And so, what the plan is with the Chromebooks is, in elementary, K4, when the students walk in, they will have their Chromebooks there in school. There, there is time built in for those first couple of weeks for teachers to actually teach our children how to use them. When you think about a five-year-old who's never used a Chromebook or a trackpad, and there's a lot that goes in with that of how to navigate the sites, how to open, how to log in, how to even know your letters. I mean, that's a lot to ask of a kindergartner. So, we will be adjusting that as the needs arise, but the priority in elementary will be to teach our students how to get on those Chromebooks, how to use them. And then we'll adjust as we go. And really, the focus is going to be, when the students are in school, we've got face-to-face time, let's maximize our face-to-face time so that we're not tapping into technology too much because our students are going to be on technology a lot. But we're not going to expect them to bring them back and forth. Teachers will have that ability to ask them once in a while to bring them back and forth, but once they've kind of learned things, we want those home and so we can maximize face-to-face time.
I have some questions. So, the school day typically is six to seven hours. How, for when they're work, they're learning remotely, subject, the assignments that they're given, like how much time can parents expect that that's going to take? I'm glad that they can work on it, they have flexible time where they can work on it. But what could they expect for each subject that they would have to cover that day?
That really, that's probably the part we're working through right now. In fact, the instructional committee is meeting tomorrow to really hammer out the details of what that looks like. But what I can answer, to answer that question, what we need to be really careful about in what we build is that it's equitable. So, in, in elementary, it'd be very easy for a remote learner to almost exceed what the hybrid students are getting because of the, what we've been able to come up with with schedule. So, we're going to build a system so that it, that our remote learners are getting equity in, in comparison to their hybrid peers. And we also don't want to make, we want to make sure that our students are not sitting in front of a Chromebook for six or seven hours a day. That's not realistic. So, for the elementary, that would be spaced out across five days. As it moves up into the middle school and then the, the high school, you know, that's one of the balance things that we're going to be working through this week with that committee. But that, that is going to be the, the point. We have to match either way with, whether you're fully remote or if you're in the hybrid, that you're getting the same access, the equal access to synchronous and asynchronous, and it's flexible enough to meet the family's needs. So, I don't have a full answer yet, but we've got a lot of groundwork laid and we should be able to hammer the rest of that out this week.
I know this is all new, but how will each student's progress be assessed?
So, I'll speak to, to elementary. We, we did was we adopt, we spent a lot of time this summer saying, you know, how do we design an assessment system and a reporting system like, like Dr. Leahy mentioned, that's going to function between all three models? We could be face-to-face at some point, we're definitely in the hybrid, or we could be fully remote. So, what could we, what can we do that's flexible enough for that? And where we landed was, to keep, to keep our current report card in elementary, we're going to use the standards-based report card that we have, we're going to, we talked about, it's really about accurate reporting. The purpose of our report card is to make sure parents are getting an accurate reporting of how their child is doing against the standards. And so, with that, the expectation is that students are attending to virtual and to in-person instruction. And we report out on their, on all of those assessment measures. So, we're going to pare things down to the most priority standards in each of the areas and we'll report on that accurately. So, if a student, for example, one of the concerns from teachers was, what do we do for students that aren't engaging with, with the curriculum? Whether that's in remote or, or face-to-face? And the reality is, we report exactly that. If, if a student is not engaging, we are going to make every effort and attempt to work with the parents, to provide them what they need necessary in order to, to meet those learning needs. But when it comes to reporting, if, if they're not participating or they're not providing, you know, they're not completing the work, then that would be reported appropriately and the comment section would include that. So, we really talked a lot in the elementary about accurate reporting regardless of where the student is, and we're just going to have to prioritize our curriculum. And, and.
the student is, and we're just going to have to prioritize our curriculum and, and work through those assessments as we go, and working on comment assessments also. And I know it's similar at the secondary, anything you need to add to that, Chris? The only thing I would say is, you know, we, we have a, a secondary grading committee, and again, Mr. Stone had a, a primary one. And last year, because everything was so quick, we did move to a pass/fail because we were very concerned, you know, could we quantify grades? Have people been trained? This is all very quick. And there was a lot of concerns around that, you know, it, it took away some latitude from our teachers, it was some frustration of parents, saying, well, where does my child actually fit? It was something that we saw a lot of districts doing, as well as, as well as colleges and universities, just saying, hey, this all happened very quickly. So we are moving back to a numerical grade for, for this year. And we feel comfortable that we have more structure around it, where there's an expectation that students will be getting a grade in each class, once a week, at least one grade a week, so we're not basing a quarterly grade on two or three grades. But there's, there's going to be a balance of grades, an expectation that teachers will be giving kids feedback, there will be grades throughout. We want to make sure too that for some families, there was concern with, hey, earning college credit, my child needs to see a grade for that transcript and all that. So, so we're going to be going to that. And with that said, we also know that right now, there's no waiver of New York State Regents' exams, right now, there's no waiver of the state test. All that is on as of now. We, we should have more information October 1st when the Board of Regents meets again. So our directors have been working to prioritize standards and wrestle with some pretty significant questions. For example, if my child has to take a lab, a chemistry lab, how is that done when, when there's only so many kids, it can only be so close together, and they're going to spend the majority of their time at home? Those are really difficult things. And this is all about out-of-the-box thinking, moving forward, prioritizing, what can we preserve in a classroom, what can we do differently? So a kid maybe can actually work through a lab setting at home to some degree, or at least get some of it in class and see a demonstration. How do our, how do our tech students use tools? If they're a remote learner and they're enrolled in that class, they have every right to fully participate in that class, but how do you use tools and get your hands on things if you can't come to school, if you're not going to come to school? So those are some of the challenges we're working through, but we're, we're pretty confident. I think we're, we're working through it, we're wrestling with it, we're asking good questions, our teachers and administrators are, are having a good dialogue of how to deliver this. And we don't want to, we don't want to take electives away from kids, because as Mr. Stone said, we could transition back if things improve, to having more students in the building, and maybe all students in the building at some point. And we don't want to get to a point where we're saying, hey, we're just going to take the really challenging electives and take them off the table and push kids into study halls or electives that may not be able to accommodate them.
Then, what's the cutoff for the temperature check? What do you, what will be considered someone has a temperature?
The cutoff, according to the guidance, is a hundred degrees or more. So if you have a temperature of one hundred or more, then you will be re-screened at the nurse's office.
Also with the requirements for COVID, do we need more cleaning staff?
Well, I know Mr. Irwin has been working diligently on that. Mr. Irwin, do you want to come up to the microphone?
Great question, and yes, we are going to need more cleaning staff. I think that's pretty obvious to everyone. What we are in the process of doing, today, we posted seventeen full-time transitional temporary assignments for our current staff to move down to the day shift to support things. We're going to be backfilling those positions with full-time substitutes at night for the duration of this temporary need. In addition to that, we are looking at options to dip into available resources within the district during the middle of the day for all these transitions. And we're expecting in the neighborhood of forty people or so, just to help with those transitions across the district. So that means that in every elementary school, there'll be at least two daytime custodians, that there'll be two additional daytime custodians in each middle school, and three additional daytime staff in the junior high and CNS, to take care of the major needs throughout the day. They'll be supplemented with, for example, at the high school, twenty-plus additional staff, primarily there to help with those transitions between classes. Okay? You're welcome.
Mr. Crabtree.
Okay, I'm going to start with positive comment. Again, to all three of you and your team and your teachers, I mean, this plan that you worked on for months and months and months for the district, thank you. Thank you for all your time and energy, and for you updating us, and I'm sure you'll be updating us in three weeks. So here are my questions. And the first ones, I would say, go to Mr. Bowles. Are you finding out when you say the number of students, are, is it equal at elementary, middle school, and high school? Are you finding out more high school kids are coming back? Or what are you finding per, per three levels?
It was twenty-six percent elementary, and it was twenty-six percent overall. Two thousand eighty-eight divided by the eighty-one, hundred and five with the enrollment.
So it's even at each level? You don't have more?
If you're at twenty-six, we're at twenty-six. Yep.
Okay. Okay. How many families or parents haven't gotten back to you, have not answered your survey?
The way it was, the way it was designed is that it was sent, in terms of this part was to, if you want to register your student for remote learning, you know, complete the form. It was very explicit in what was sent out and the language around it. And then there were some questions about not getting up the schedule, so we worked hard to get the schedule so parents can make an informed decision. So we originally wanted to open it for a week, and then we extended that to the next Wednesday, so parents could have more time to think through it. And, and we had some really interesting conversations with parents who were on the fence, and they were, they were saying, you know, this is a real big decision for us as a family for a variety of reasons. Sometimes somebody had somebody with a compromised health system living there, sometimes it was a parent, sometimes it was children. There's a lot of interesting conversations we had, and I, I really feel good that we gave families that decision given where we are. Because we want families to feel good about whatever that is and saying, hey, we're going to do our best to offer remote instruction for those people at home, and those students aren't going to be penalized in any way, as well as the students who are going to be here, but the ones that are coming are only going to be here one or two days a week. So, so we, I, by opening it for that extra time, we did close it last Wednesday. We got a couple more emails and calls immediately after it closed. And, and what we set from that point forward, because we have to build a schedule and it has to be stable, otherwise if it's constantly moving kids in and out, at this point, we're going to move it to the buildings. And if you have a question, or you have a concern, if you want to make, or you're requesting some kind of an accommodation or change, talk to the building principal, because one of the challenges we're finding is, so we've divided it, let's say, at the middle school, where your A through K students come Monday and Tuesday, and the rest of the students come Thursday, Friday, while some are finding an imbalance. So if more parents want their kids to come to school Thursday, Friday, that means we might be overloading those classes, so they're not meeting the social distancing guidelines, and you'll be overloaded on Thursday, Friday, and there won't be enough kids there Monday, Tuesday. So we, we have to maintain that, that equity and balance too, to make the schools run and to meet our requirements, to keep students six feet apart and all that. So that's a challenge. And I, my hope, and I, and I know we all share this, is we want to keep the dialogue going, we want to be as accommodating as possible, but we also have to create a, a stable schedule, bus routes, and everything else, because it's, the transportation's really affected by this too, because they're not going through the routes the way they, you know, we're going to start, as Don had said, with these routes that are, you know, just let's get everybody on the bus and make sure we get everybody, but eventually, we want to narrow that down just to those students who are riding the bus Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, asking parents too, if you don't plan on transportation, let us know, so we can make those bus routes a little bit efficient. But by moving students continuously, it affects transportation, it affects the building schedules, we may not be able to meet social distancing guidelines. And then we also want, as I've told parents, we want our child to be assigned to a teacher in September and be, build a relationship, a connection with the students in that class as well as that teacher. So we want to be mindful of that.
My concern isn't any of that that you just stated, but I thank you for doing it.
Yeah.
My concern is that the two thousand eighty-eight, answer the, that want remote answered. I am not sure the six thousand seventeen are thinking their kid is coming to school. I think there's going to be kids out there in our community that haven't read anything, haven't looked at a website. I know so because as a teacher, I had parents that never read anything. And you're going to have kids that aren't going to come to school, that you think are coming to school. What are you going to do about that? Because the survey you gave is, you asked parents, right, if you want the remote learning. And those parents have thought it over, and everything you said, Chris, thank you so much, is definitely two thousand eighty-eight wanted. But there are people out in our community that haven't looked at anything. And I'm especially concerned about the kindergarten enrollment, okay? We should be up close to five sixty, five seventy, getting to that six hundred. We are low. And I know there are kindergarten kids out there that have not contacted you. So my concern is, are you going to go to these houses? Are, how are you going to contact these people? All once, I have a classroom and I'm supposed to have ten kids and five show because five aren't just not going to send their kids?
Well, Bob, I will answer the kindergarten one first, because the secretaries and principals have those names on list.
Okay.
Of students that should be coming. But one of the things, if you were five, the parents do not have to send their child to school.
Right. Legally, they don't have to.
But we would have to check to see if that, if that's the option that they're choosing. One of the differences from the spring to now, in the new documents from State Ed, they said, we are mandated to follow up on attendance, as if we were just in regular school before. So whether it starts with the classroom teacher recording that student A or B have been absent and may start to either call home, send an email home, then they would pass it on to maybe either school administration or, or counselor or social worker at the school. There may be something going on with the family as to why they are not here, but we have to follow up. Maybe they've moved and we're anticipating that they're here. So legally, we have to follow up just like it was regular school like we did in, in the past. So that would be number one. And we're.
I'm just saying, there's, I'm afraid you're going to have more kids out there than, than you usually have that aren't coming.
The one thing about kindergarten this year, Mr. Keegan and I, we spent a lot of time, and you know, we look at enrollment, and last year, we didn't quite get to, to six hundred for the first time in a, in a long time. Our cohorts have always been six hundred plus, there were times they were at seven hundred plus. Central New York has been declining enrollment as a whole. And I think this year, some parents may be thinking, hey, I may keep my kindergarten home just for one more year. But we'll have to follow up with all the kindergartners that we don't.
Can I just add to that? I think, I think I can answer a little bit more. So the building principals are aware of that question, Bob, so they're, they are looking at what their enrollment should be versus what it is, and they're, we're cross-checking that. So that's one, one thing. The other piece is, we know we have to build flexibility into both of those models. And so the numbers we're using, we're erring on the side of caution. So in the event that, let's say, all of a sudden, we missed some students and they're going to be jumping over the hybrid, we have the flexibility on both sides to a small degree, but we have that there, we're not completely locked in. Because we know there's going to be situations that we can't anticipate, there's going to be certain family situations that, you know, might be different from others. So there is going to be some flexibility in between both of those models, very little, but it's there intentionally, knowing that we're not going to know every single student.
All right. Explain, so being a former elementary teacher, I want to go back to the elementary program. So if a child is completely remote, is that a remote teacher only? Or is that a teacher, is that how it goes?
Yes, yes. So, so what we're doing is for the remote-only students, they will be assigned to a remote-only teacher, up to thirty, more like around twenty-five per teacher. And so those teachers would be responsible for meeting their needs, and also knowing that we can't expect our remote learners, like I mentioned earlier, to be sitting in front of a computer all day.
Right.
They'll be able then to be able to flex their schedule across those four days in order to meet the various needs of their students, their times and everything else. But that, that will be their role as the remote.
Okay, so do teachers volunteer for the, volunteer for the remote? Or is it working out nicely that you have, because you have two thousand eighty-eight remote, and you say it's twenty-six percent each one? So do you have twenty-six percent of teachers, or?
So, yeah, we're working on that right now. We just opened it up for, for teachers who are interested in volunteering, that's what we worked on today. And then what'll happen next is, if we don't fully fill that, and we're about halfway there right now, it would be seniority-based from.
So a teacher may be assigned without wanting to do it? Am I correct?
We're, we're hoping we get enough of volunteers. But in the event that we don't, we're going to have to meet the needs of the students, yeah.
Another concern I haven't, I follow Ryan McMahon quite frequently, and he was on today, is that our teachers will be having a setup next Friday, week from Friday, at CNS High School, so our teachers will be able to be tested. He is thinking about starting a program for especially high school students, which I think is excellent. My concern at the high school and the junior high is the moving from class to class. I've watched on TV other school districts, and, and they're not wearing masks, and I know our kids will follow the rules and, I am just concerned that's when something bad's going to happen, is when our kids at the high school and junior high are moving from class to class. I just, I, I, maybe it's me, maybe it's something I shouldn't worry about, but I, I just have a concern. I know you have teachers in the hallway, and you've got your principals and so forth, but I'd be watching that very carefully. High school kids like to socialize, they like to find parts in the building, to socialize, and based on their schedule, I, you know, I just, I have concern about that. So I'm glad that Ryan McMahon is thinking about testing students at the, at, at the high school level. I just think that's a great idea.
Just as a reminder there, any testing that does take place is voluntary.
I know that.
And any student would have to have parent permission to do so. So I just want to make sure that.
Well, if they were eighteen, they wouldn't, but.
Correct.
My last question is the nurses, and I thank you for the, talking about maintenance. I know Liverpool, I have a concern about if I was a nurse at Allen Road, let's say, across the street from where I live. We got a lot of students that have health problems. And then something like this comes up. Is you, are you satisfied with the, who we have and, and, or the amount of nurses that we have in our buildings will be able to handle this?
Right now, we're talking to, to Tim Bednarski and looking at the coverage. Some of the larger buildings have multiple nurses. What you're talking about is the elementary that tend to have one, or there are floating nurses that go from point A to point B. We did add some, some nursing in our budget this past year, anticipating the need, not anticipating as much that we continued with the pandemic. But we are looking at that and floating coverage around the district, and that will happen also based on need. As you know, some schools have fewer students like Bear Road than they did before. So again, moving resources, because Bear Road had larger number of students, and now they're only going to have enough K through two. So again, shuffling resources. And we did have several traveling nurses that were.
I just, I just have a concern. Our nurses have had more put on their plate than ever before, from the state, and all these mandates. And I, when I traveled around before COVID, I, I just saw nurses overwhelmed, they didn't say anything, they're very positive in this school district, but our nurses are overwhelmed. This is another thing. Because if a case comes up, yes, we go to the health, it's going to take time for the nurse to do this, and she's got somebody that's a diabetic that has to come down and be tested. So I have a concern. My last question deals with transportation, and I know we're not that far there because we've got to wait to see who's coming and who isn't. Do we foresee any problems with bus routes or the number of buses we have to compile with our situation?
In our conversations with Matt Conti, again, we have a reduced number of students coming to school on any given day. So if you look at the secondary, you have twenty percent of the students coming because they're once every four days. And at the elementary, it's about fifty percent. So we haven't been informed of any potential problems from transportation, because again, with, the numbers have been growing for those remote learners, so we don't anticipate that at this time.
All right, thank you.
Just a quick one, because when you, Mr. Crabtree asked about remote versus in-person, and you'll have volunteers. When you get to secondary and you have all the certification issues, where are you with staffing there? Is it becoming a little more of a challenge?
Yeah, yeah. It's, it's a much more complicated challenge, and we've been looking at that closely because K four, you can say, hey, this teacher teaches all four core areas. Once you get to seventh grade, you know, you have a, a math teacher, you have three Once you get to seventh grade, you know, you have a math teacher, you have three math teachers for all the seventh graders. We can't do it that way. So right now, what, the best option for us is because everybody, again, with the idea that we should treat everyone as if they're remote learners, is to put the remote learners with the hybrid learners in those sections and deliver the remote instruction just as you would with the hybrid, although the hybrid students will come in part of the, you know, part of the week. But we looked at the option of, could we pull those out and create remote-only sections? The challenge with that is it offsets balance. We have a fixed amount of staffing. We have, we have a requirement to provide every child a certified teacher in that area. We have unique schedules across the board for our students, and it becomes very, very difficult. We also have some teachers for that combination to work from home in terms of delivering instruction. So you pull that out, too. So you have all these different factors, and when you compile all those, it's really impossible to say, hey, we're just going to have, we looked at creating remote teams. But if you don't have enough kids, and you give 80 kids a remote team, and then what do you do with the other 45 kids? You put them in another team, but then when you bring those into school, you're not going to be at that social distance number. Let's say the number's 12 in a class. Now you're 15 or 16 kids in a class, you violate the social distancing guidelines. I know that's a lot, but that's how interconnected everything is in the scheduling. So given that we can't meet the social distancing guidelines unless we have perfect numbers of remote students, we don't want to force a student to become a remote student. If they want to come to school, then we really have to work and say, hey, you're going to have those students on your roster soon. I'll be sending more information out to our teachers tomorrow. And that's going to be true 5 through 12. And that's going to be one of our biggest hurdles, structurally, starting the school year, is to accommodate those students. But again, with the understanding that there's equity, we're all part of the same learning community. Some students will be getting more, all their instruction from home, some will be in school one or two days a week. And we have a responsibility to support all of them. So that's one of our biggest challenges going into the school year, is getting that information out.
A lot of moving parts. Thank you.
Yeah.
We meet again, we'll know how this is going. We will have already gone through a cycle here. Or almost, it looks like. You'll be through the first two days. I'm looking at the calendar right now. Okay. Any other questions from the board? Thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
And thank you for giving the best answers you could right now. Appreciate that. We have a presentation on some fund balance reserves, and Mr. Keegan's going to present to us. And the, I guess, about creating the TRS and ERS.
Well, good evening. Well, it's that time of year again, where we have closed our books, we're preparing for the annual audit, and, and we're looking at the financial health of the district and kind of doing, planning our balance sheet a little bit. And whenever we talk about our balance sheet, it really is our fund balance and our reserves. What's the financial condition of the district? And I wanted to share some thoughts with you. You folks know all too well, because you've lived it. We've worked very hard over the last several years to shore up the district's finances. And I think we've said this numerous times before. When we come to the next rainy day, the next difficult time, we want to be in better financial condition than we were the last time. And so I'm happy to report that the district, as of this moment in time, or at least as of June 30th, 2020, we are in better shape than we've been in in a long time. And I would love to, I've said this to you before, I'd love to tell you that it was due to our great leadership and financial acumen, but the reality of it is, we've had a few things that have gone our way. I'd like to recap those for you. So fuel prices have been historically low, and our usage certainly was low last year with the closure. Energy prices have been historically low, and again, our usage was low, both due to the closure and we've had some warm winters. Pension funding rates, they peaked around 2014, 15. So leading up to that point, we saw our funding rates go up every year. Well, they've actually generally been declining since then, and we're really fortunate in New York State, where both the ERS and the TRS are fully funded and extremely well managed. And I can't emphasize enough what a big deal this is, not only for our schools and communities and our employees, but the state at large. Many states around the country have pension plans where they are grossly wildly underfunded. And what that means when you have an underfunded pension plan is that you have to cover those costs in the future, and you're going to compromise the quality of your education. At least in New York State with our ERS and our TRS, we are in better shape than most, most states. We have, and another big cost that we experience are healthcare costs. And we have an excellent health oversight committee and have worked with our partners, ENV, they're our healthcare consultants, Exelus, you know who they are, our third-party administrators, administrators, our health plan, and ProAct, they're the ones who do our prescriptions, to find opportunities to improve employee benefits while avoiding market rate increases. And I choose my words carefully, avoiding market rate increases. Our benefits costs have, in fact, increased annually, but far less than the market and less than we've budgeted. And so that's, that's helped us in our financial condition. We've been lucky with OCM, Bocey, I said lucky, we've been fortunate to have them supporting us and have the great service providers, our OTPT speech folks and those that work with our Medicare-eligible students. We've increased our revenues from Medicaid and our state aid relative to our special ed population. And OCM has been doing our, an excellent job with our Medicaid billing and our stack processing. So we've seen those revenues go up. You may remember a recent policy committee, Mary, that our policies approved by the board, that we, we added some new investment options for us. We added the thing called night class. So we've been able to invest our funds in local government investment pool, which has allowed us to earn additional interest. And as a result of the other things I've mentioned, we've had a little bit more money to invest, so that's been good. We've also, due to having a little healthier balance sheet, we haven't had to take out revenue anticipation notes, which has reduced our interest expense. And then finally, we did not incur a bunch of costs last year that we would have otherwise cost incurred, which we wish we did incur, supporting our kids in in-person instruction. So these are some favorable things that happened to us over the last couple of years that have put us in good financial position. Unfortunately, the rainy day is coming. It's on the horizon, and I understand it's going to be a doozy. And most significantly, New York State has notified us that they'll be likely reducing our state aid by 20%. And as a matter of fact, the aid payments we've received to date have all had a reduction of 20, 20%, with a little caveat that says, kind of depending on federal spending, you may or may not get the money. Well, just to put that in perspective, federal, the cuts of 20% on our overall state aid is $14 million. That's a mind-boggling amount of money. Pension rates are starting to rise, and that's, you know, both in ERS and TRS, the rates were higher for the 2021 school year. You know, we have to expect that, that there's going to be cycles in the market and that this stuff's going to happen, and we certainly have anticipated it. And we kind of expect, over the next five years, we'll probably see increases in those rates. Although our HOC and partners have done a great job, as I mentioned earlier, we've pulled a lot of rabbits out of the hat in terms of our healthcare. And we've really tried to do, I think there's been a really thoughtful effort to really maintain, and where possible, increase the quality of our employee benefits while, while driving out, driving our cost increases down to below market rates. Again, they've increased, but not at the same rate as the market. And the market's been increasing, the projections are 8 to 10% a year. You know, we've been in the low single-digit percentage increases, which has been pretty amazing. I think we're kind of, that's going to turn on us a little bit, again, because we've, we've been working really hard to take advantage of a lot of opportunities. But I think that there's, there's certainly some pent-up demand in the medical community as a result of delayed medical procedures. And that sounds weird, but we all know people who have delayed procedures as a result of COVID. And I think you're going to see that there's going to be some additional spike in that. We've also seen the introduction of some amazing, hopeful medical treatments that are wildly expensive, things like gene therapy. So we're going to, we're going to have some challenges there. So at this juncture, we always sit back and we say, okay, well, what liabilities do we have that we don't have covered, that we're allowed to cover under, under the current laws? And so we know that the ERS and TRS are going to be going up, and we now have the ability to reserve some amount of money for ERS and some amount of money for TRS. And we'd, we'd like to do that, and we strongly recommend that we do that. We have a huge liability for employee benefits. As everybody knows, when employees retire, we pay them out for their unused sick time and any accrued vacation and personal days. And in the private sector, that liability is always on your balance sheet. In the public sector, that's just not how it's been done, but there is a, an ability to reserve for that. And so my strong recommendation, and we've talked about this, Dan and myself, we strongly recommend that we establish these reserves now with funds that we've accumulated due to the favorable things we've just talked about. And it'll take the pressure off future budgets so that when those cuts come through, when we have some downturns, and we got to pay the TRS bill or the ERS bill, we can look to those reserves to shore up our budget. And the same thing with the, the employee benefits cost. So a lot of numbers on this slide, but let me, let me walk you through them quickly. You remember that we ended last year with a fund balance of 5.34%, or about $8.9 million. We promised and committed to take the refund from those cost, final cost report penalties that was refunded back to us and use that at Bear Road, and we've, we've transferred that money. We have had a very good experience. This next line, this 5.7 million is the revenues less expenditures. This is addition to our fund balance as a result of positive experiences. In our budget this year, you might remember, we agreed to transfer $1 million to shore up the 2021 budget, and that's, that number is there as well. So now, we want to also transfer funds to create an ERS reserve, a TRS reserve, and to create a employee benefits liability reserve. And so that leaves us with a projected fund balance of about 9.4 million, which would be about 5.5%. Now, I will tell you that, that we're in the final throes of our year-end accounting, and, and we're working with our auditors on how to think about state aid receivable and things like that. But right now, we're looking at having a fund balance in excess of 5%, which is, you know, the state encourages you to have not more than four. I've talked to my colleagues, and this is pretty much where most districts are going to end up. They're going to end up in that 5% range. And so, again, we're recommending that, that we do that. And so where our reserves end up, we started the year at 9.6 million in overall reserves. If we, if the board takes the action tonight, that's, that we're recommending and creates these three reserves, we'll end up with 11.7 million in reserves, just a couple million-dollar increase. Just to refresh your memory, we did move that general liability, the $1 million, out of the general liability reserve. We, we used money out of the capital reserve on Bear Road, and we're creating these ERS, TRS, and employee benefits reserves. So that, that pretty much sums it up. Any questions or concerns?
I do.
Sure.
So first of all, I just want to say, when I saw this on the agenda, I'm so very happy that we're doing this. We talk about this every year since the state allowed us to start a reserve for this purpose. Thank you for that. I was wondering how the amounts of the reserve funds were determined? Is it by?
Sure.
Number of employees, or?
Great, great question. So the employee benefits reserve has a maximum amount you can put in, and so that's what we put into that reserve. The, the TRS reserve and the employee benefits reserve, we put in a certain amount that we thought we could afford. It certainly by no means covers the liabilities completely, but we thought it was a good start toward those. And I think, I think you probably know this already, but you're not allowed to have a TRS reserve until you have an ERS reserve. So it was, it was good for us to, to fully fund that and get that taken care of.
When you're talking about 20% and 14 million, is that for the entire year?
Yep, that's the entire year. That would be, that would be as if we didn't get 20% of the 2021 state aid.
My question is, we would be all right if we went 20, we would be able to handle 14 million?
We.
Because I just, I mean, at Bocey's the other night, we talked about this, and some school districts are not going to make it this year if the governor does this.
I'm not saying we would be completely okay. I'm saying that between our fund balance.
For the first quarter, we're all right.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
No, what, what, this, these things require board action. So yeah, like anytime you see money get into a reserve. Now, remember, some reserves require taxpayer authorization to create and taxpayer authorization to spend. These require board action to create and board action to spend. So you guys are in the, in the driver's seat in terms of these, the use of these reserves.
Yeah, I mean, I think this is great. As Mary said, I'm glad we're able to do this. I mean, that, I know the, just the, just to add the TRS piece as a sub-fund to the ERS reserve, was a battle that had gone on for three, four years. There were a lot of groups who were against it. And the limits, I think you're limited to 2% on the payroll for the year and 10% total?
Yeah, something like that.
And just, just to state, I mean, you're going to pay these anyway, so the money's not going to be locked in there. I mean, you're, it's an intercept from state aid. So my question is the mechanics of that. I mean, if it's taken from state aid, we're able to release that then out of the reserve for our use?
Yeah, so, exactly. So I think, I, to be clear on this, the goal of any reserve is to, is to address an existing liability. And I think, I think to the extent that we have a TRS bill to pay or an ERS bill to play, that's an existing liability we could use that money for. I'm here to tell you that if we have sufficient funds, if we don't get our $14 million cut, I would say, let's leave the money in the reserve. We don't necessarily have to pile more in there, but we leave it in there until we need the money to cover those reserves. And, you know, it puts, it gives everybody a little bit of peace of mind. I just, I've looked back at what we've gone through as a district, what other school districts have gone through, and that, that, when, when ERS and TRS rates go up, if they end up spiking up, or something bad happens to us, we want to at least have time to think about it and to recalibrate. And having reserves gives you the ability to say, hey, let's cover this with our reserves, let's put a good plan together, as opposed to, let's get out the butcher knife and start chopping our budget irrationally.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
All right, well, thank you. That'll be before shortly. Board of Education Committee reports, I will go to Mrs. Scanlon first.
So the policy committee meeting dates? Sent an email to Connie. Also, we lost our two student reps. Two student reps this year.
Thank you, Mr. Crabtree.
Okay, our first legislative meeting will be in October, October 28th, from 5:00 to 6:00, and we're going to do it live in this room. And Matt, Terry, and Paul will, I'm sure, be here. And I'm sure we'll have a lot to talk about dealing with legislative by October 28th.
So that is the date of the?
Yes.
I did see that in an email recently.
Today.
I knew it was really recently. Did you want to talk about the OCM report? I did have one little question, but I.
On the, on the report?
Yeah, just to, and I don't want to start, because you and I have talked about this, but I just want to get the, and it's about this superintendent search.
Yeah, I'll talk, I was going to talk a little bit about that, so.
Do you want my question first?
Go, go for it.
Just, just the, the way it works there, I just, I read the last sentence, and it said, the OCM board will choose a superintendent based upon the recommendation of the commissioner. So are you actually choosing it, or where does that, or is it commissioner's recommendation going to be?
Let me go through the process, because we've been doing this for a year now.
You have been, yes.
Not like North Syracuse. We've been doing this for a year, and unfortunately, the candidate we wanted was not accepted by the commissioner, and we only sent one candidate.
Right.
Last year, and therefore, we had to start all over. So we started over with a different consultant who the board really was pleased with. It was a whole different ballgame. Consultants make a difference. So just the other day, the two candidates went, we went public with it, and one candidate is Dr. Matt Cook, he just got his doctorate in June. He's superintendent of Newark Central School District, which is near Rochester, and our own Christopher DeFalvo, Assistant Superintendent for Instructional Services at Bocey's. So these are the two candidates that the stakeholder groups will be meeting on the 26th. I believe Mr. Bowles is on one of those committees, and so is Mr. Marizio. So they will be meeting the two candidates and asking questions, and then the board will get back from each participant a sheet of paper with some comments. And then the board will meet, and then we will send one or both of the candidates to, again, a new interim. Since we've started this process, we're on the fourth person, who happens to be the former chancellor of the Board of Regents, is the new interim. And so we would send one or two candidates to her, and then she would ask questions, and then she would give her yes or no for one or both. She says no to both, we start over again. So that's, that's where we are. But the board, the board does make the final decision, really, at the, at the end.
Thank you.
Yep. The other thing I wanted to talk about. Yep. The other thing I wanted to talk about is that, as Dan knows, they've been meeting very, like, weekly and bi-weekly with BOCSIS and all the superintendents. And Colleen Vigiani, our deputy superintendent, has just done a marvelous job with her team on working with all of these districts in Cortland, Madison, and Ada County. I hope each of you got to read the article that had Connie send schools embedded classes in cutting-edge businesses to show you what our students in North Syracuse are doing in our embedded programs, which we have one right at Driver's Village, and we have them in the media market down at WCNY. We have new vision programs, engineering, criminal justice, how these are important for the students to leave their high school and go to the actual job and work with the actual people. Last year, Michael and Paul and Dan and I visited some of the classrooms. After the year gets going, maybe three months or so, I would like to take you and visit some of these programs to see where our kids are doing in the embedded programs. And that's about it, unless you people have any questions about either July or August, OCM-BOCSIS.
Okay, thank you. Superintendent?
Thank you. Just want to remind the board that we're notified that there is an August graduation for people that pass summer school, 6:00 PM on August 27th. Also, if you've listened to the news, there will be some mobile testing sites. There will be one also at the junior high on September 4th. But you have to make an appointment with the county. I just want to remind everyone, and it was said earlier, that this is very challenging work that everyone is working on, and it is, no one is saying that it's easy. We will be out visiting schools. If I have to assist in temperature checks, we'll be doing that. And we do want to get into classrooms. Don't want to ask anyone to do something that we would not be willing to do ourselves. There is a lot of work that is being done, but we need to support our teachers, because with this technology and trying to do remote learning, we need to make sure that we're providing daily, ongoing support, especially if people have difficulty, and also continued PD opportunities for our staff, because this is something that is critical, not only for them, but for our students. But if we don't provide them the adequate support, then that's something that is our fault. So that's something that we will be stressing. And I think that is all.
Okay, thank you. Any other board comments?
I wanted, I can't think of what I'm thinking of, the chart with all the administrators and who works under them. I know they're revised with the new principal at CNS and also at Roxborough, but I like to see who's responsible for each of the...
My secretary was updating that.
What do you call it? I can't even think of the chart. Organizational chart. If we could have an update on the organizational chart. I just want to make a comment as a former teacher in this district. Again, I said about the administrators and everything you have done with the teachers, working hand-in-hand with you and everybody. And my questions were just concerns that I have, personal concerns, is that I want to thank the staff members in this school district, just as Dan Bowles just said. This is not going to be easy. If I was going in a classroom, I know I'd be very nervous doing all this technology. I'd be having Michael, I'd call Michael 24/7. But I know they're nervous, okay? And they're in their rooms already. I see some teachers. Am I correct? They're allowed to go in their rooms. They're already at Allen Road, getting their rooms up. I remember how exciting that was every year. And it's just going to be different. You're not going to have maybe all the bookcases you had with all the materials in your room. And I just wish the teachers in this district and the administrators the best of luck. And we are all supportive. You hear it. We're all supportive. We're going to make some mistakes, but we're going to move forward, and hopefully, we get over this and we get into the year and things get better. So I just want to wish everybody the best of luck.
Thank you. I just want to mention one other thing, and some of you may receive emails from NISBA, New York State School Boards Association. They're holding their annual conference or assembly like everybody else, as they're holding it remote. I bring that up because in case you've ever thought about attending it, it'd be easier to attend. And I think they're doing it for half price, if I'm not mistaken. I haven't sifted through the agenda yet to decide how I'm going to do it. I was hoping to participate, but it's three days at the end of October. I think one of the days is conflicts with your legislative committee meeting, but I'm sure remotely we can work that out. But I just wanted to point that out, you know, keep an eye out for those emails if you're interested. Routine action items, if I could have a motion for A, the consideration of approval of the minutes of the Board of Education meeting of October 10th, motion from Mr., I'll go with Mark, and second from Ms. Scanlon. Any questions? It's before us. All in favor? Posed? Carried. I know, it's Thorne. I get a motion to put the classification of school placement disabled students in B, C, and D. We have disabled students, preschool, disabled, and home instruction. For B, C, and D, I'd like to do those together. Motion by Terry, seconded by Aaron. Any discussion on those items? Seeing none, all in favor? Posed, that is carried. A, consideration to create the New York State Employee Retirement System Reserve Fund. Can a motion place that before us? Motion from Terry, seconded from George. Any discussion? We heard Don's presentation on that. Seeing none, all in favor? Posed, that is carried. It'll be created in the amount mentioned in the resolution. And item B, resolution, create New York State Teacher Retirement System Reserve Fund, a sub-fund to the ERS. Motion from Mary, seconded from Aaron. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Posed, that is carried. Thank you. And C, Employee Benefit Accrued Liability Reserve Fund. A motion, put that before us? Motion from George, seconded from Mr. Thorne. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Posed, that is carried. If we could take D and E together, if I get a motion, put D and E together. Motion from Aaron, seconded from Terry. This is creation of a full-time equivalent social worker and also abolishing the TA, half-time teaching position and part-time pre-K teaching assistant. So are there any questions on that? That's before us now. I'm sure Mr. Nefy would be opposed if there are. Seeing none, all in favor? Posed, that is carried. Item F, the adopt a district-wide school safety plan. A motion, place that before us? Motion from Mr. Herman, seconded from Terry. Any discussion? None, all in favor? Posed, that is carried. Resolution to establish tax rates. Can I get a motion to place that before us? Motion from Mary, seconded from Mark. Okay, any questions or discussion?
I want to thank Don for his supplementary work. So basically, what I see is that, you know, we generally look at what we think the levy's going to be in June, and we were lower, which is a good, which is a good thing, because last year it wasn't. And again, Clay is partially, what do you call it? Yeah, it's not full of value. So the number's much larger than it is for Seline and Cicero. And Don tells you why with the assessments and the equalization rate. But again, Clay is going up, where the other two are going down. So I might move in with Michael. But anyway, thank you, Don, for all of it. When you say the change for Town of Clay is $28,004, is that per thousand, or is that the total? Okay, okay. So I know about what my taxes are going to go up. Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote. Ms. Gibson? Aye.
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 That motion is carried. Thank you.
Couple weeks, I'll have my bill.
If everybody hasn't yet, Ms. Gibson will need you to sign some documents to that effect. If I get a resolution to take the authorization of warrants H and the tax collection deposit agreement together, H and I, motion from Ms. Krueger, seconded from Ms. Scanlon. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Posed, that is carried. Surplus of marketable and non-marketable. We have some marketable desks, seven drawer wooden teacher desk. Can I get a motion, place that before us? Motion from Mr. Thorne, seconded from Mr. Harrington. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? Raise your hand. Posed, that is carried. We have an acknowledgement of a gift. Can I get a motion, put K before us? Motion from Terry, seconded from Mary. Acknowledgement of the gifts from North Syracuse Central School District. Received a check in the amount of $330 from Visions Federal Credit Union Classroom Funding Program. That'll be used for school supplies at Roxborough and North Syracuse Central School District. Also, received a check in the amount of $1,944.48 from North Syracuse Education Foundation for Allen Road Elementary School Grant Winner Stand-Up Desk Boost Productivity. Those are what we have. Favor, raise your hands. Posed, that is carried. This is an acknowledgement of retirements. We have one retirement on tonight's agenda, Susan Tiffault, a music teacher who's retiring with 27 years of experience, service to us. Thank you. Instructional report, A, if I get a motion to place that before us? Motion from Ms. Krueger, seconded from Mr. Harrington. Any questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Posed, that motion is carried. Support staff personnel report, B, a motion, place that before us? Motion from Terry, seconded from Ms. Scanlon. Any questions? None, all in favor? Posed, that is also carried. And administrative report, personnel report, C, a motion, place that before us? Motion from Aaron, seconded from Mr. Marizio. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Posed, that is carried. I'd like to make a motion then to move into executive session for the purpose of receiving an update on negotiations with the teacher aid bargaining unit to review an illegal matter relative to potential litigation and to review the employment record of three individuals with no action to follow. If I get a second, please. Second from Ms. Scanlon. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Posed, that item is carried. Then I just need a motion to adjourn. Motion from Mr. Harrington, seconded from Ms. Scanlon. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Posed, carried. We are adjourned. Thank you. It is 7:22. I saw the steel came in for Bear Road. I saw it, yeah. Great.
Just open the door.
Usually, this neutral is phenomenal.